Egimofa, pretty baby
Ah ha, I'm a rich child
Come and see Egimofa
I beg you be aware of her
Egimofa with her problem
Ah ha, I'm a rich child
Egimofa na flented to a bush
I beg you be aware of her
Na who go come Egimofa?
Ah ha, I'm a rich child
Na who go show her love?
I beg you be aware of her
You have to call our elder sister Egimofa Hmm? You know she works with the government She will find a solution Eh? You hear?
Oh, I need to hear from my husband If I don't hear from him, I will die I will kill myself I...I...I won't let them my two children Eh? What am I going to tell my two children now?
Okay Please I will try and call Egimofa myself In fact, I will call her immediately
No Don't call her If you call her, then she will think it's not serious It's better I call her, so that she will know how serious it is I will not say that my husband has been missing So that she will start doing her work immediately And find my husband for me
Eh, okay
Who name? Did he fall? What is it?
It's my sister She doesn't know where her husband has gone
Hey
I'm not eating again before
You know it
I know it
If you know it, let me myself, I'm not eat too
Yeah Wash your hand
I should wash my hand
What she do, since you say you don't want to eat again?
Keep doing this dirty job
Here Why is your line coming? Eh? What is wrong with your old phone?
Um, I... I put off my phone because I don't know what to tell her
Lie to her now?
I don't lie to my wife
It's your phone Which of them? Because we are now two Eh? And please, just close your mouth then What do you mean by you don't lie to your wife? Did you tell her the truth about you selling Indian ham? Did you tell her? You don't lie to your wife? Here Hello?
Egimofa Ikem is missing oh Tasty fried meat is missing
Uh-uh Is that why you're calling me by this time of the night? Sounding like this? Eh? Sounding as if your father is dead? It is only our father's death That should make you sound like that And eh What do you mean by Ikem is missing? I don't understand Is Ikem a baby? Or he can no longer find his way home?
I am a baby, a baby, a baby, a baby oh He missing oh My baby is missing
Wait, wait, wait a bit If you're talking and crying at the same time How am I supposed to hear what you're saying? Eh?
Okay, I will not cry, so that you hear what I'm saying
And how can an adult like Ikem be missing? That is the one that I'm trying to understand
He went to see the Igwe I'm go to that place oh His mom there I seen that He has not come back home That is why I said my tasty fried meat is missing
Oh Maybe he want to change soup Hmm, he want to change soup Maybe he is tired of eating okor So he went in search of his goose You know it is men You know how they behave Eh? He might even have somebody In fact, a mistress In that sense, feeling that's right
Yes
He may even be a widow Or a spinster I can tell with these men
God forbid It's not my Ikem
Eh eh eh, oh Guama Oh Guama Please Eh? Go and sleep Go and sleep Ikem is not missing I don't believe it
I'm very sure that he will be back by morning
Eh, but if he doesn't come back by morning Then call me
And go and report to the people
And both of us will call this whole country Until we find him Eh? So go and sleep Goodnight Eh, sleep
He just got the fall Like that Tasty fried meat oh Sweet animal Come back home, come back home I will die oh I will say to Ahhh, tasty fried meat oh You know He have to stay back He have to stay back You know by stage is tough I will call it again
You are missing So you are missing Hey hey Shut up So As I'm looking at you like this You are missing You are missing Missing into my body No, let me reflect me Missing inside my body Missed
Egimofa, please Please let me go, please
Hey Shut up there Shut up there Did you And that your cousin Joseph That is missing in London Let me go Eh?
Let you go
Just close your mouth Because as you are talking to me now You are missing Hey
Come back, come back, come back I will kill myself oh I will die I will kill you Come back to him Somebody is looking for you Come back Come back like you don't feel good Nobody is looking for you Nobody is looking for you Nobody is looking for you And everybody is looking for you too We are there, yeah, nobody Where are you now? This is tough, what is a Sunday, stop now I'm a poor man now I'm a sweet tough on the way This is whatever Egimofa Egimofa It is all your crazy stuff oh
Close your mouth Close your mouth The wife is here
Where?
Outside the door
Oh my true god
Just shut Just keep quiet Oh my good god If my own god did like Just close your mouth
Egimofa, we are here You need to come out
You people should go now Go now I am not around I am not in the house, go
Egimofa Egimofa, this matter is very, very serious You need to come out oh You need to come out and help us Before Oguma dies of heartbreak
Egimofa Egimofa
Hey What? What? Hey Chuma Tell me something Chuma, don't that fire you Don't that fire you Hey
What is it?
Shh Allow me to think Eggy Chalu, chalu, chalu Maybe she...she's not at home Eh, Abi?
No When I spoke to her on the phone last night She was at home
Did she tell you so?
No
As Oguo Maybe she did not even sleep in this house Is she not a single city lady? Maybe she has a man somewhere, we don't know We can wait for her phone, okay?
Stop saying that Maybe she's fast asleep Uh-uh Everything is done, okay, okay, okay
Oh, she has want to work so early We know we go and look for in her office
That's true
Let us go to her office Let's go to her office
Let's go Ah ha, ah ha I'm...I'm doing our...our sister neighbor Right done Please, do you know where she's going to? If she's around, because we've been knocking That lady Nobody should ask me anything about her
Why is she answering us like this? On her period, yeah? Eh, Moma?
Hey
We care neighbors Look at her Ne ya Unneboli neighbors everywhere
Chuma, we don't have that time
Please, let's go to our sister's office So that this search of my husband can begin now
Let's go, let's go
Please Let's not listen to this
Let us go, let us go, leave her I'll just ask a question oh
As for you, I've marked your picture I will come back for you I don't want to go around that I thought you had seen it
Look at them
Look at them
Just look at them Actually, I say one Tom Unneboli, unneboli neighbor Unneboli neighbor Unneboli neighbor Unneboli neighbor What are you thinking? Do you want to kill me? No, 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 no
That will not happen It will not happen Stay here Don't even move Hmm? Stay here until I come back Do you hear me? Don't move Just sit the way you're sitting And I don't want you To dress up I want it to still be like this So that we will continue That thing that we did last night Hmm? Now I started loving you So I want to quickly go and meet your wife And tell her one story That eh You...you were attacked And by office rescued you Uh huh That way She will not know The enjoyment you had last night If you like Escape Hmm? If you like Escape by the time I come back Hey You know women and her stories I will cook up one thing And anything I say that you did They will believe me See I'm one time And you must have been manhandled Before you even start thinking of How to prove yourself innocent Hmm? So just respect yourself And stay here This is called a I am coming back kiss Or flower kiss Did you know that? Who 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 teach you? Your wife is a confirmed bushfarrow I even heard She calls you Fried meat Fried meat My darling You are not fried meat You are my Husband So See you See you
Abimo Niko Pim Eh, my husband
Hi Oguma Oh, she going oh If any, I'm a jammas oh Your husband be found He's not lost, yes
No, my husband is not lost So where is he? Is he here, me talk? Where is Ikem? Ikem is lost We are going to find him You know our sister is going to go meet So she's going to find your missing husband Eh? Please come now My missing husband Ikem is missing Okay, he's not missing oh
He's not missing
Okay, he's not missing
He's not missing Ikem is missing Thank God, your husband is not missing
Look for missing, no
I'll sleep your floor
Missing, missing
Other miss, other miss
We are going to look for him Somewhere
Sweet fried meat Sweet fried meat Missing husband Missing husband, missing husband Ah, missing husband Missing husband
He wants to bed Bed the boss in him So long he back
Missing husband
We have his sister She will find him Yes, see eh?
My missing husband
That was a sleep of No, missing
I'm a husband, sleep of doggo I'm talking for him, say he I'm a sleep of doggo My sleep of doggo He missing, no, he's not missing Let him over talk, please No, no, no
Not allow you
Ikem is not
She's okay, yeah Missing husband Where is there? He's not, maybe he's inside you
He's not, yeah, hey
Help me and thank God oh
Okay
Thank God for my life
What happened?
Thank God that I was able to escape A... A very horrible man Ikem Ikem
Ikem nearly killed you
Which Ikem is that?
Hey That man you call your husband Ikem He appeared in front of my door that night And said he had an urgent message from you
Uh huh Uh huh
I thought it was true And I opened my door Immediately, he came in Hey He changed it
What, Egimofa, forgive me, what is this? Stop crying Stop crying and tell us what happened
You want don't, don't get in here, man
What happened now?
Is Ikem in your house? Immediately, he walked in oh He started telling me That it was me, he wanted to marry on love That it was me, he has always loved But he was late, because he had already met you Then when he announced on me again At our father's birthday ceremony That that was when it turned on him That he missed He said from that day He couldn't speak English And that his wife, all of a sudden On the wood In fact In his exact words His wife Turned to firewood To him That was why he lied He said he now lied to you That he was going to the Igwe's palace Then he sneaks into the city And found his way into my house When he came in oh When he came in oh
Talk now What happened now? Let's think, what happened? Wait, Ikem, your husband
Started watching me Up here neighbor He retouched his face At some point He gathered the two Let us wash it Just be here The next thing Oguma Ogumadum He held me He held me so tight And then he overpowered me That was when He did it He did it oh, he did it
What did he do?
Not once Not twice Not thrice Many, 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 many
Many what? Talk um
Thanks
Hey
Hi
Oguma Divorce that Ikem Divorce him He is not a husband material Even by one quarter yard Oguma Chuma
We should clear road, I want to feed
I want to feed
Hey, beco, beco
Don't beco Don't just try it Don't try a pet He has been waiting for Ikem
Eh? This Ikem you're talking about Is he still in your house? Or he has escaped? He is still there
I can never
He is still there Sitting down on my bed With his singlet And fanning himself Even though my AC is on Because he is hot Very hot Eh? Eh? So, I had to trick him I had to trick him I told him that me too I have started loving him After everything he did to me last night In fact, I told him to allow me To go and buy akala And pap Eh? As long as she So that he can replenish the energy he spent Doing what he did last night Even though I did not enjoy it Even though I did not like it Eh? Eh, but that was how I escaped And I ran for my life In fact, let me even Tell you the next one